What's Michael here?
Michael, Michael.
Board, Board of Education. Isn't that him on the front?
No, that's, no, that's Mr. Roy Henshaw. Henshaw, yeah.
Looks like, remind me.
Recording in progress.
Do we know if Mr. Rigsby is going to join us?
I haven't heard from him today. I'm not sure.
He better. He's the reason for the Friday meeting.
I think he works. Hey, Jim, how you doing, pal?
Long time no see.
Yeah, man.
How are you?
Yeah, don't get it. Might you say?
And we used to play some basketball off the court. Jimmy about tear the goals down up there.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah.
That's been a long time.
Not too long, what, forty-five, fifty years?
He probably still playing, aren't you?
Uh, yeah, I play a little bit.
Do you?
Trying to get hurt, that's my goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Been out there a long time, eh?
I don't want to be the one that walks around having any. You know what I'm saying? I don't want to sleep. Joey, Joey's got AFib. He's kind of, he's trying to get back.
Really?
But he's, he's having an abrasion done this week.
That was a joke. Now, he's sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. That's sixty-six. Well, he played for a while, man. He played a lot.
He still plays three-on-three, so I'm just, but he's kind of quiet, so his heart, his heart gets up.
Let me say to everyone, if you want to address the council, we would ask that you fill out a card. Robbie has them. They're also available outside in the lobby. But if, if you would just fill out the card and, and pass it to Robbie, he'll pass it to me, and I'll be able to call on you. And if you just want to sit there and listen, you're brave people.
We're trying not to be too long.
Now, this ought to be pretty brief, I think.
I don't have an agenda. Do you have an agenda? I don't have an agenda. Do you have an agenda?
I know how to do it. I'll take care of it.
Here.
I think he might be.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get some for council.
Yes, yes. I'm pretty sure he says. Might be. I think.
Rigsby?
I think that's what he told me.
Okay.
Might have been about that.
All right.
I think he did this. I just texted.
He's coming straight from work. He'll be here.
Oh, yeah. That's what he told me. Ten minutes.
Need some more.
I don't want.
If so, let me know. So I got to pull it up.
Mr. Ford?
Thank you.
Like to call the council meeting to order. This is the seven o'clock meeting. This is a special called meeting. It is October the twentieth, and we are in session. Let's do the pledge of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, may I impose on you to do our invocation?
I can do that. If y'all would bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, we come before you this evening and ask that you clear our minds and help us conduct the business of the town of Stokesdale. That we would hear those that want to speak and that would help us to understand and map a path forward for traffic safety. We just thank you so much for all your blessings and ask that you lead, guide, and direct us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's review and adopt the agenda. I, I make a motion that the agenda be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Might mention that at this point in time, Mr. Rigsby is not with us, but I do believe he's supposed to join us.
He said ten minutes, Mr. Mayor.
I got you. We're open for citizens' comments on the floor. Eileen, would you like to speak?
Okay. Perfect.
I gave Robbie my name and address, but in case you don't know me, Eileen Theary, eight-one-zero-one Meadow Springs Place, Stokesdale. Okay. Good evening, gentlemen, and I'm not going to take three minutes, okay? I'll leave it for somebody else. I would like to thank you for considering having a town Stokesdale meeting with the North Carolina Department of Transportation and possibly with a private engineer. This would allow questions residents may have concerning the change in traffic patterns within the town. Having lived in my chosen town of Stokesdale for eighteen years, it concerns me when we have changes to the traffic patterns without being able to learn the positive or negative effect these modifications may have on our roads. In conclusion, I do encourage you to arrange this meeting, including an independent engineer, to reassure that we are being well-served by the NC DOT. Having been employed for twenty-five years by a very large town called Babemon, it's from the Bible, I will, I was, I'm well aware that this move may incur a fee that you would be responsible for, but it would be in the best interest of our citizens and residents, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Consider proposal from Davenport Engineering to, to work as a traffic consultant for the town of Stokesdale. I believe this is yours, Mr. Jones.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's kind of both of us, but I'll, I'll make the picture.
We are. You're right.
I, I got a few notes that I made, and I want to make some points here. Why is Tim Jones on this track? You know, what led me to this point? And, you know, I live in Stokesdale. I travel these roads every day. Very familiar with how traffic's increased. And on or about October the fourth, I was traveling with a family member from Walnut Cove to Stokesdale. And we were basically run off the road when a driver turned in front of us, making a left-hand turn in front of us. The, I was driving, and it took three violent maneuvers for us to miss that vehicle and miss another vehicle that was in the oncoming lane. Fortunately, that was a defensive driver, and they gave me just enough room to get by. Both of us in the vehicle were shaken. You know, we turned around to go see if the other driver that ran off the road was okay. When we got there, they were gone. We were able to take a picture of the tag number of the guilty party, and that was reported to Forsyth County, Forsyth County Sheriff's Deputy. And, and that was a, kind of a Jesus Take the Wheel moment, if you've heard the song. Been on my mind ever since. You know, we, we all have those narrow escapes, and we all see traffic accidents. But it's not always as close as, this is as close a call as I ever want to have that we had. And so, traffic in Stokesdale was already on my mind. You know, this, this project that NC DOT is proposing. It came to light for council and the citizens at the end of September. Was it, basically, we knew they were doing something, but we didn't know what they were doing, and that was presented to council on September the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. So, background on myself for those that may not know me or need a refresher. I grew up in this area, and I served a first term on council from December two thousand fifteen to December two thousand nineteen. I was appointed to the planning board July the ninth, two thousand and twenty, and served as a chair up until my election to my present term, which was in December two thousand twenty-one. My current term ends in two thousand twenty-five. I've known a lot of people killed on the local roadways. I've seen a lot of accidents. I haven't, fortunately, haven't had to pick up the pieces quite the same way as our, our firemen do after these accidents and the other first responders. But I've got the gist of it. I did a little research, and, you know, you can find anything on the internet, but I looked this, this afternoon. The National Highway Traffic Safety Board estimates forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-five people were killed on the nation's highways in two thousand twenty-two. I think casualties, oh, and I mean, the death toll from the Vietnam War for US military personnel was, you know, somewhere in fifty thousand or something. That's a lot of people to lose in one year to traffic accidents. So, I also looked to see how many fatalities we'd had in North Carolina. The number I came up with was one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven people in two thousand and twenty-two. That was a twenty-one percent increase from two thousand nineteen. And the other interesting number that I, that I found, the estimated cost for that in terms of property damage, and I, I don't know if this includes payouts for things like life insurance, but certainly it mentioned for those that were disabled, was sixty-eight billion, with a B, sixty-eight billion. I know when I travel about, I've, I've leave the state sometimes. I don't travel as much as some people. But in my observation, traffic's getting worse, but that driving habits of people are getting worse. I, I see a lot of people that are texting on their phone. I, I see a lot of people that I suspect are on either drugs or they've been drinking. I see a lot of people running red lights. And I, I don't think law enforcement is keeping up, or perhaps either because of shortage of personnel or budget or both, but I don't see very many people pulled over. And all of this is cause for concern with me. It's, you know, I take my duties as a council member seriously. I'm sworn to attend to the, to the welfare of the town for as long as I'm in this seat. And the, the last word, the word I previously had about Project R fifty-eight twenty-three I obtained from the Summerfield Scoop, they printed a story January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, wherein they stated that the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization in Greensboro, had voted to delay fifty-eight twenty-three until January two thousand twenty-four. Said, okay, well, that's interesting. So, it was a surprise to me when the beginning of September, Town Hall here got a notice that NC DOT wanted to use our meeting room at the end of September. You know, that's fine. But it was a surprise to me that this has come on this fast. And according to information that I've obtained, right-of-way acquisition for this project is scheduled for May of two thousand twenty-four. I attempted to participate with another council member and, and call him a special meeting for August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. That was canceled by someone else. But I was trying to get a, get a start on this, and so we've been delayed until tonight. You know, one of the reasons we're meeting on Friday is because Mr. Rigsby was tied up on Thursday and had told us he would be available for a Friday evening meeting, so I hope he'll get here shortly.
He is here now.
Okay, okay, Mr. Rigsby, you slipped in on me. Glad to see you.
Yes, sir.
And so, all this coupled together causes me concern, and then I, I've looked at these maps in detail. And I, with respect to the NC DOT and, and Mr. Bobby Norris, our district engineer who's in the room, I'm, I, I think they're close to the target on some things, but I think they may be missing a couple of spots that need a, a second look or a little bit more priority. In part, the idea to hire a traffic engineer to serve the town council in the town of Stokesdale is my own. And, and I don't mean this in any adversarial way. What I think the towns, town of Stokesdale needs and the town council needs is an interpreter, a translator. Perhaps someone that can channel our questions and concerns and present them to NC DOT if necessary. And that is the reason this is on the agenda. I did attempt to get a proposal from a second company, and that just hasn't worked out. They didn't have any availability. And so, normally, we would like to have more than one option. But Mr. Roy Henshaw with Davenport is here tonight and would like to have a few words with her, with us in a way of a presentation. So, Mr. Davenport, if you would, come to the podium, if that's okay with the mayor.
Mr. Henshaw?
Yes. Would you like to address us, please?
Hey. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
If you would, just identify yourself and who you are and who you're with.
Yes, my name's Royal Henshaw. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Davenport. We're primarily a transportation engineering firm based out of Winston-Salem, but we also have offices all over North Carolina and, and Virginia as well, serving the southeast region. Our primary focus is transportation. We do a lot of traffic impact analysis. We do roadway design. We do traffic signal design, which is my specialty. And, you know, we were contacted by Mr. Jones here, and so, what was presented to the, or what was sent to the council here, this is kind of a standard due diligence proposal. And I think at the time this was sent, we didn't have a clear idea of what kind of services you were looking for. So, what the due diligence proposal usually is, is, is an hourly proposal with a not-to-exceed number on it, where we can either provide the services under this contract or, once we get a better feel for what you're looking for in particular cases, we can give you a lump sum contract as well, if you'd prefer that. We do have some on-call contracts with other municipalities, and most of what we do with those is represent the municipality in dealing with development projects. So, if you've got a development project and they presented plans, they have to do a, if they're required to do a traffic impact analysis, we can review that for the municipality. We can represent them with the developer and, and coordinate with them and NC DOT and just make sure that all the needs are met as far as looking after safety primarily. So, and I'm open to any questions.
So, anyone have any questions for Mr. Henshaw?
Mr. Henshaw, are you presently employed with any towns to do service concerning the DOT and not, not a development?
Well, usually, we do not represent against NC DOT, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do that just as, as a coordination or as Mr. Jones mentioned, as like a translator. But, you know, it's, it's our experience with NC DOT is, is that their primary goal is also to look after safety. So, usually, the, our experience working with municipalities is, is not necessarily an adversarial relationship. It's more of a cooperative relationship with NC DOT.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Hey, hold on a minute. We might have some. All right.
So, due diligence, is that, I mean, I know what due diligence means. Is that kind of just a kitchen scene type thing? Like, can you explain what you will be doing? Who will give you your directives of what to do, what the deliverable will be? Is part of this?
Right. We, we would want to meet with, with town officials and, and find out, you know, what your concerns are and, and, you know, what we can do to help address those concerns. So, it's just kind of a blanket, hourly contract to do that until, like I said, if we had, if we get a better idea of a specific goal, then maybe we can either continue to offer services on an hourly basis or, if you prefer, we can give a lump sum for that particular project.
Would, Mr. Henshaw, by the way, thank you for coming. It's, it's nice of you to come on a Friday night. Sure you had other things you could be doing. You act as an interpreter, and I almost need somebody to interpret what you interpret. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure where we're going. So, we, we would need a set of goals for you to look at, which we haven't, we haven't done yet, and we haven't got with the fire department or anybody. What, what would you be doing that the DOT wouldn't be? I mean, the DOT, they are our engineers, as far as I'm concerned. We put their, you know, paid by the taxpayers. What would, what would you be able to do that they wouldn't be able to do for us? Or, I mean, are they, I don't want to have an adversarial, like you said, relationship with them.
But our, our experience is not usually even working, even in coordination, working between municipalities and NC DOT specifically. Usually, NC DOT and municipalities, in my experience, work well together. So, you know, I was not aware previous this evening that, you know, your concerns involve this particular TIP project. This is more of a, a general contract, basically, to, to find out what we can, what we can do for you.
Right, right. I don't think we've had, had a lot of input with DOT. I mean, we, we haven't, we just haven't got together and done it. We just have got the maps and everything, but, but thank you. I don't think I've got anything else.
I got a question. From time to time, I believe Davenport represents private developers and, and works with them during the rezoning process.
That's correct.
And during a rezoning process, it may be common for a, a council member to have questions about, you know, data, traffic count, width of a road, for example. Does Davenport, what does Davenport do to ensure that those numbers are correct when they are passed on to a town council?
You're talking about when we provide the, when we develop the traffic impact analysis?
Right, right. Or even if it's something as simple as the width of a road. You know, if, if, if the council was to ask you, you know, what the width of a current road is, how would you ensure that you are providing the correct answer to that?
We would send someone out there with a wheel and take a measurement on it.
Okay. And, and that happens?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I've got a question. Mr. Jones, what are you hoping for with Davenport and, and their being able to advise us?
Well, I'm hoping to make a motion here in a second, Mr. Mayor, but I'll certainly be glad to address your question. In my brief conversations with Davenport representatives, I told them that perhaps the mayor and Mr. Rigsby, or two of us, whoever they may be, would meet with Davenport and, and kind of outline what we may or may not want them to do. If we don't know what we want them to do, we may be sure that we cover what we don't want them to do. But anyway, I had hoped that this initial amount here would be enough to cover an initial consultation and then a workshop-type meeting with the entire town council and then a, some sort of opinion follow-up by Davenport as to how much the, any request from council would actually cost for Davenport to implement. You know, in this day and age, three thousand dollars is, is not a lot of money. We, council just voted at the last meeting to spend five or six hundred dollars to repair one toilet. So, it, it's, you know, the three thousand is, is not a lot. But again, it's, it's my feeling that this is something that's coming on us pretty fast, and, and we need to be sure we're covering all our bases. The way I count it, there are three major roads that come through Stokesdale, and they're carrying a huge amount of traffic every day, whether it's local traffic or through traffic. That answer your question?
Yes, sir. Is there any further discussion on the proposed, or the proposal for Davenport Engineering to work on the traffic consultant for the town of Stokesdale?
I, I do have one question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Based on what Mr. Jones just described, that he, he would like to achieve out of this three thousand dollars, I mean, do you think that's feasible within your pay structure? Or do you, do you think it would take more, more than ten, eleven, twelve hours to accomplish that?
It, like I said, I, I don't have a clear, I guess, conception of, of what you're looking for and, and what you want to get out of this just yet, so it's hard for me to say. But the three thousand dollars, like I said, is just an hourly cap to which we run to the end of that. Then we would have to go back to you and, and either extend that or, like I said, develop a lump sum contract, if you'd prefer that.
I'm sorry, Jim, you might not be through.
No, I'm, I'm.
And the, the document does include, I, I guess, our, our different hourly rates for different individuals over here. I'm a, I'm a project manager, too.
I, I'll tell you, I don't have a problem spending whatever we have to do as far as, for the citizens, as far as to make sure things are right. My concern is we haven't, as a council, even so much as, I mean, we've, I guess we've all looked at the maps, but we haven't got together one time. We haven't got together with the fire department. And then, you know, I mean, what, what do we want to do? I mean, we, you know, I don't, I don't think we need an engineer to say what we need, want to do, and we haven't gotten with DOT to see if, if there is things we do that they wouldn't do. I would think that if we couldn't get our act together with them, that'd be the time to do it. I, I just, I may be wrong. And like I said, I don't mind spending the money or, or, you know, doing that, but how, how many other towns have to do that? I, I'd like to ask Mr. Norris. Is it Mr. Norris? I've heard your name so many times and seen you a couple times, but never met you. Thank you for being here either tonight. Is this, is this something normal or a small town to hire a traffic engineer to, to do?
Mr. Landrith, if I don't mind your question, but so everybody can hear, it'd be better for letting Mr. Norris have the microphone in the podium.
If you would, please, sir.
Mayor, if that's okay.
Please, yes. Mr. Norris, if you don't mind, identify yourself, please, sir.
Yeah, my name's Bobby Norris. I'm a licensed professional engineer with NC DOT. I'm the district engineer for Guilford County. So.
Do you, do you have other towns, are there other towns that do that, small towns that hire traffic engineers?
Yes, there are other towns that do hire traffic engineering firms to help, you know, look at the way the town wants, would like to see it grow and to help coordinate with NC DOT as we're developing our step program. Some towns actually have their own engineering departments, High Point, Greensboro, you know, the major cities. They have their own engineering departments that do basically the same thing of what Mr. Henshaw does or, or could do for a, a smaller town, in a smaller city. I do work with engineering firms with the town of Gibsonville, also Archdale. I mean, so, it's not uncommon.
Okay. Is, do you see a need for it here?
Um.
I mean, I know you're not on council or anything, but.
Um, you know, just like Mr. Henshaw said, you know, the NC DOT, we're, we're trying to move people, places, and products through the, the state safely and efficiently. We do lean towards the safety part a whole lot stronger than anything else. But, you know, if the town feels like they need to, I mean, I'm not going to disagree with you on it. I mean, it's, sometimes this information does get very technical. And sometimes I find myself, you know, speaking terms and stuff that, you know, I can be looking you in the eye and talk to you and blank. I mean, it, it happens. And, and I know there's some large words. I mean, I've had them do that to me, and it goes over my head, too. So, having an interpreter, if what's, if that's what you're thinking you possibly need, then I can see the need for it. Also, it. Also, it, having that um capability to help develop a comprehensive traffic plan through the town, uh, to assist with any kind of development. I can see the big benefit to that. But, I mean, it's, you know, we're always available for any kind of traffic stuff that you need also.
Right, right. I, I know that, and, and I, I don't feel like we've utilized it yet, because, like I say, we just, I, I tell you the truth, when, when this came up, I thought we were going to see a four lane coming up through there, tearing everybody's house down.
Yeah.
I was actually slightly relieved the way it was, although it does affect some property owners. And there, there are some tweaks that, that I'd love to see that, because we've got some, you know, we talk about our rural character all the time here, and, and some of our rural character seems like it might go away if we're not careful. And I, I, I think there's probably some, some ways to tweak. If, if we approached you as a council, let's just say, for instance, let's say that everybody on council agreed that we just don't want none of this. Is that even possible? Does that matter? Are we even in that position to?
Well, I mean, right, you know, we had the, the public hearing. Um, we also had the, before the public, well, public hearing, public workshop. Um, it was the elected officials meeting before it. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it, we, we're still in the comment period of the evaluation of these. So, any, any kind of comments is very, is well valued, so. And we do try to address every comment, you know, even if there are multiple ones, we'll loop those together and just address five or six comments at one. But they are looked at and evaluated and addressed.
Right.
The best that we can, you know, as long as it doesn't sacrifice safety.
Right.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't matter, we, we don't want to sacrifice safety, but I mean, that's the only rate, you know, but, you know, there's no way we'd want to sacrifice any safety for anybody, but.
And I can speak to the, the initial development of, of this project was to four lane sixty-eight from two twenty
Yeah, I remember.
all the way up to one fifty-eight. That was the way it was originally in, put into our SIP program. Through our analysis and our preliminary engineering and doing our traffic forecasting with the opening of the I seventy-three, and then with all the improvements and the loop around Greensboro, traffic patterns have dramatically, tra- dramatically changed to the point, and even forecasting out the traffic growth along sixty-eight, it didn't warrant a four lane road. So as a whole and working with the MPO, and I'm going to say, I thought some of you guys were there in the initial meeting also to discuss how do we move on, because the project did get shelved for a while when we went through COVID, and then I think we had some fi- NCDOT had financial issues where basically every project got shelved. But we knew if we don't do something, that funding would go away. And, you know, when they did do the analysis and the forecasting, they did see patterns in issues and problems at specific intersections, safety issues. By changing the whole corridor, they weren't going to address that. I honestly think by making it a four lane road, we could address all those, but the other issue is it's going to increase the speed.
Right.
Which is, I think, the other big issue here. So this is a last, and I'm not going to say a last resort, but this was a method to maintain the funding of a project to address issues the best that we could and to help make the, the corridor safer by addressing the, the, at the, the accident patterns at some of the major intersections.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and and certainly we can have discussion on that. And, and my motion would be to accept the proposal from Davenport Engineering dated October the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars. And this proposal was presented, uh, at the last town council meeting. And that would be my motion.
Do I have a sec, do I have a second? I do not have a second.
Yes, you do. You know you got a second.
All right, you got a second. Discussion?
Is, is the intent of this to look at the, uh, projects that were presented here by the NCDOT on the twenty-fifth of September, the known projects in ta- in town?
Well.
Or, in, let me finish one second, please.
Sure.
We, we have, you know, heard citizens, and we've talked about it ourselves from time to time, the last, you know, almost four years of the traffic at the school. You know, the traffic issues at the school. Could, could that be something that could be addressed?
I think so. Mr. Foy, I'll answer you this way. I, I read into the record, basically, the times and dates I've been here as a council member, planning board member, and in all that time, we've had very little interaction with NCDOT as a board in terms of where do you think the problem is, you know, what, what are your citizens concerned about, et cetera. Mr. Norris and NCDOT, they have to be concerned with this whole state, and it's a great big state. We are a pinpoint on the map. But one of the luxuries we have as a board is just being able to focus on Stokesdale. That, that is what we're sworn to attend to when we took office. And so, wh- when I look at that project, honestly, I tell you what I see. I'm very familiar with all these intersections here. I've been here all my life. If those three traffic circles are built, then that indicates to me that NCDOT never intends to build a multi-lane road down that pathway, down that corridor. They have already stated that the one fifty-eight bypass is being taken off the drawing board, as I understand it. Not because necessarily they don't want to do it, they don't have the funding, you know, there's only so much money in the state. And, uh, I wouldn't want their job having to figure out where to spend every dollar. That's just mind boggling. But we, as a council, need to be concerned about our town, our intersections and our citizens, and this is not a night or day thing, but if we can let NCDOT know what, where we see problems at, we may be able to point out some things that they are not aware of. You know, a lot of times, this, a lot of this engineering is done with satellite photos and maps and CAD programs by engineers that, that never visit a site, they're looking at traffic counts. One of the things that I think about when you're looking at traffic counts, it's not telling you how much of that traffic's running a red light. It's not necessarily telling you how much of it is, is going. Is speeding through that intersection, and the list goes on. I, I, I know from ob- from long observation that the traffic from Winston-Salem, traveling on one fifty-eight, tends to have trouble slowing down when it gets to one fifty-eight, sixty-five in Stokesdale.
Oh, yeah.
I watch tractor and trailers running lights there quite frequently, and sometimes one or two cars following them. It is just plum scary. There's a long stretch of road between us and Walkertown, and, and that traffic just gets to, used to flowing through that open countryside. And there's really nothing telling that traffic, warning them about some congestion ahead. There's no sign that says, hey, small town ahead, you got to slow down. The, um, that's a fact. I, it, you know, one of the things I'd, I'd like to ask NCDOT for through this board and perhaps through a traffic engineer is can, can we get some type of, uh, warning light upstream of that corridor into Stokesdale from Walkertown? That, to my mind's eye, that kind of thing doesn't cost that much. That particular intersection, uh, has basically six roads coming into it, because it has a side road that used to be on the south side of the railroad tracks when they were here. Those roads are still there. They serve two churches, but both of those churches have another avenue of approach to get in and out of the churches. And, and I have had some conversation with those church members, some of them are here tonight, about the idea of perhaps closing off the end that, that goes into one fifty-eight to make, for, for safety reasons. That, you know, these are layman's.
Stokesdale Christian?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. They're very dangerous.
I, I agree. That's a terrible, terrible intersection.
And so, the, it, it's, I can think of a number of questions that I have as a citizen, I have as a board member. And, you know, again, I ha- I've seen the traffic grow over the years. I, I've, I've, I've seen what's happening out there every day. I just about became a statistic
Right.
most recently. Uh, there's a wake-up call that, you know, I need to, I think it was a God thing, you know, I need to focus on what I'm doing here as a council member. I have the ability to ask for a, a, a traffic, you know, a proposal from a traffic engineer, and I have the ab- ability to present it to this board. You know, what y'all choose to do with it, that, that's on y'all. But, but I think this is, this is necessary. I think it's necessary so that we'll have a translator and an interpreter. There, anybody that knows me, and board members certainly know me, I don't spend the town's money very easily.
Right.
It's, uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't particularly like this, but there's, with, you know, we run our water system, that's a cr- critical service we provide to our citizens. I can't think of anything else that impacts our citizens' lives more than, than traffic in the area, and it could be a greater danger. You know, I can think of three kids that were killed in the area in, in recent history on, on our roads because of accidents. And, uh, if we don't do this, the next time there's a pileup somewhere, how can we look at each other and say that we couldn't have possibly impacted it some?
Okay, so, so with my question being, are we going to look at other areas, other than what's the problem? The answer is yes?
I think so.
Yes.
And the intersection at the school needs to be part of that, too. I'm sorry, I didn't get to that. It was on, on my mind.
That's all, that's all I was looking for. Are we focusing on this, or are we looking at a more holistic view?
I think a holistic view.
I like that. And, and the second thing is, I think this town does have a speeding problem. Our people driving through this town have a speeding problem. They're probably both. But also, uh, I, I think we have a signage problem, too. So maybe this consultant can, could evaluate some of the signs we have. You know, you mentioned a flashing light. I do like that. I think those are beneficial, but, uh, you know, the, the school, the school flashing lights don't even work during schools, school zone all the time. So, you know, I, I, I think, I think if we're going to look, do this, we're going to, we, we should take a more holistic angle at this and not just look at these.
Correct, correct. That's what, that's what Mr. Jones and I were both thinking, that, uh, that it would do exactly that.
Let, let me ask you a question. Uh, Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Thank you for remaining standing.
Oh, no problem.
You heard the, the items he mentioned?
Yes.
Has anybody from the town ever mentioned those items to you?
I know that there's been a traffic study with our municipal traffic school group in Raleigh. So, I mean, I know we've looked at that multiple times. I think we've got a solution. Last I heard, we were waiting on the schools to, they, they were given two options, but there's some on-site stuff that needs to be done for it to work out.
Are those things that, that you would do if we asked you? I mean, if we said this, we, we would ask you. See, guys, I wouldn't have a problem hiring somebody. I mean, it's, I don't know the amount of money it's worth anybody's life. So I don't want to be shamed into going, you know, uh, saying if I don't do something that, you know, the next pileup, uh, is going to be my fault. But, and I, I would be willing to go with this. But one of the, uh, I, I would want anything that we were going to do to go through the DOT and see what they could do for us, and that'd be our backup if we didn't. I wouldn't want to run out spending two hundred, three hundred dollars an hour when DOT, we're already paying our taxes to DOT to, um, to do these things. And if we don't get satisfaction from them, of course, we go to, go to them.
That's what I.
I don't have a bitter problem doing it. And, and, you know, like I said, uh, there's not enough money out there to, you know, for, to save a child or whatever, but, you know, I'm not only ashamed into it when, that, we can do that. If we, if we can agree, if we can agree that, whatever it is we're wanting to look at, go through DOT, if we don't get satisfaction, then, you know, and I'm for it.
I'm exact, I'm, I'm exactly with you, and I think that's what Mr. Jones and I were both thinking, that, that we would use Davenport as a, as a secondary source to, to give us the opinion, or, as he said, an interpretation of whatever DOT is proposing. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you, Mr. Landis.
Another thing, who's gonna, who's going to be the go-between? We got to decide those things. You know, if we do it, I mean, because I, you, you can't have five of us, you know, going, I mean, it's kind of like going to Robbie. We drive him crazy now.
Well, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones is taking the lead in this.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, as, as long as we designate.
And I'll be more than happy to, to help wherever I can.
We should have a follow-up workshop, as Tim has suggested.
Yeah.
You know, to get citizen input and also, go ahead, Tim, I'm sorry.
We can meet all we want to and have all the discussions we want to with Davenport, just as long as we provide the necessary public notice and the, the citizens can attend and so forth. So we have two options. A couple of us can interface with Davenport, or all five of us can. I have no preference, one way or the other. But again, uh, I look at the timeframes for this project, and I think of it in terms of Mr. Norris and NCDOT, they have X amount of money to spend in Stokesdale. So current project accepted, I, I wonder if that's the best place to spend the money, or, or would, if a citizen of Stokesdale could vote, would they vote to have the intersection at the school fixed, for example?
Well, the issue you run into here is, this is a, a program step project, and it was developed and submitted and is scored, and that's how the money is set aside. It gets scored along with all the other SIP programs throughout the whole state. So if this gets trashed, then that funding goes back into the major pot, and then a new, a new project has to be developed and submitted as a SIP project to address the school.
But, but we can, you could tweak the project, because you said it wasn't anything written in stone, I mean, as far as.
Yeah, this is, this is preliminary. This is, this is just like one step above, um, public hearing maps. You know, thi- this has alternatives in it. Um, nothing is set in stone. That's why we had the public workshop, is to allow a time period for the public, you guys, to, to, you know, look at the plans and make comments to us, and, you know, then we can address them as a whole and basically provide you guys with the comments that we got and what we're doing to address them.
Yeah, I, I definitely would love to see some tweaking going on, because it, it affects a lot of our older businesses that is our rural character. I mean, everybody talks about rural character. We don't want to be knocking the rural character down. So, you know, we, we, uh, you, you're going down like one fifty-eight, uh, you, you got to kind of center, and I understand why you did it that way and everything, but, you know, we've got that big, big medium over there, too, where you could shift, it could be some shift. There's some things that, you know, that's.
You're talking the, the, the weird bu- um, snake out around going into the.
Different things.
The roundabouts?
We would not want to, uh, make.
They're putting in there to slow the traffic down.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I know, but, like I said, you, you can move the highway a little bit here and there.
Slightly, yes.
Yeah, and, uh, it would be nice, uh, those things that I think we'd want to look at. You know, we don't want to make people's properties useless.
Yeah. Oh, believe me, I grew up in this area. I'm originally from the intersection sixty-eight and two twenty, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know this area, and I have fought with my sister many times as who was riding in the shopping, the bottom of the shopping cart for by rights.
Sixty-eight and two twenty?
Yes.
Really?
The Price Farm.
Okay. Do you know Joe Coleman?
Joe who?
Joe Coleman.
Joe Coleman? Yes, I do. I know Mr. David Bennett.
Okay, that's my uncle.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I know the Niels.
All right, let's not make this incestuous, God. Come on now.
We're getting some rapport built here.
Y'all got conflicts of interest here.
I've got a question.
Yes.
You, you mentioned the time period. So, so the meeting was on September twenty-fifth. Wha- what is the time period?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's the end of October. But I don't foresee if it's a week or two later, or you can make a special request that you guys are having trouble, you know, you want to provide some comments, but as a whole, you know, can we delay it a little bit?
I, I, I think that would be good, because we're.
But make the request.
We're starting to get on, we've got an election coming up.
Yes.
You hate to even put something like that in there, but we could have a change up here. But that would be, but we would need to make a request as a council.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah. It would go a long, a longer way with more. Oomph behind it, yes.
I, I believe we, I think we all want to look at it a little bit more, because we really haven't looked at it. We looked at it, it was nice y'all did the presentation.
And, and it's a lot of information here. I know it is.
Well, I thought we was going to get four lanes.
We looked at it as individuals, but haven't talked about it as a body.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, a- a- and I think we need to do that.
Yeah.
Like I say, I.
We're in the middle of a motion now, but I'll make a motion that we do formally. Uh, later, I'm gonna make that motion that we extend that a little bit. Uh, I feel like I had one more question, Bobby. A comment was made earlier about NC. Huh?
Roy.
No, it's definitely Bobby Norris up there.
Okay.
Uh, right.
That's Mr. Henshaw you're talking about.
A statement was made earlier in this meeting about the one fifty-eight bypass, the northern bypass, and the reason that it's not advancing right now is due to funding. And that, part of that may be true, but my understanding is that the reason it's not advancing is because you don't believe it's needed.
Well, yes, because, you know, and the way step pro- pro- um, projects get, every entity has a certain amount of points that they could put toward projects. Um, the, here, you guys are somewhat part of the RPO and the MPO, the.
Allegedly, yes.
Yeah. Um, so, you know, you guys present to them, you you want this project, so they put more of their points into them. But they also get standard points for how much congestion it helps out, um, improvement in safety, you know, stuff like, those are statistical points that get without any kinda influence. But other points gets added by way of division, you know, the DOT. Um, and, you know, whether based upon how, what route it is on, it being a US route, it does kinda qualify for a statewide funding, but based upon the statewide funding, those are typically held for interstates. So it goes down to the next level, which is the region. And, you know, we, in this area, we share, our region is Division Nine. Division Seven, which is where I'm from, it's five counties, Rockingham, Caswell, Alamance, Orange, and Guilford. Um, and Division Nine includes Winston.
Okay.
Um, and I can't tell you the rest of those counties, because I've, I've only worked in this, but, um, so we, you know, then that's the next level of where those projects can get funding from there. And if it's not enough funding in that, then it goes to the division level. So we get our own set of points for the division also that we can set forth towards, and it's so many points per project that we can put for, and if we really have an input, we really want this project. So we put the max, and we have a maximum amount of points. So it, so that's how all the points are gathered and then they're all added, added up. And then when it's all said and done, based upon the amount of money that they're looking at, what we've got, that's how they go down those lists of funding. So if it meets in that, then the project gets funded and then we move on. And if a project is started on and then drops out, then they kinda pull up the next project.
Okay, and is, that's all, all those entities use, it's state funding, right? Is it?
Well, it's sta- it's federal and state.
Okay.
The, well, the statewide funding, which interstate and possible US routes, those are predominantly federal funds.
Okay.
But there are federal funds other, other, other ways, but, but yeah, those federal funds are pretty much interstates.
Now, a a a project like we were talking about earlier with the school, that that's more state?
Yeah, that's gonna be more division.
Division, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Norris, you mentioned the RPO.
Yeah.
Could you define that?
It's a rural planning organization. Piedmont Triad Rural Planning Organization is in this area also.
Do, do, where do they meet at? How how would we gain access to to that information?
They meet in Carnegill, um, and I can provide you with their address.
If you would, get that to our town clerk so he can distribute it to us. I I was unaware of that organization.
Okay.
That, or if I have, I've had forgotten it.
I know, I know the, 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 the RPO in this area, which is like I said, the Piedmont Triad Regional Planning Organization, they cover Rockingham, Caswell, um, s- small parts of Guilford County that aren't actually in the metro planning organization, which is the MPO, which is basically the city of Greensboro and and Hopon. And some of southern part of Guilford County and some of northern part of Davidson.
It, Mr. Norris, if you know the answer to this, I would like for you to enlighten me. The Metropolitan Planning Organization meets in Greensboro.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Kay Aberges, the chairwoman, she's a council member for the city of Greensboro. I know Skip Austin attends, for example. Somehow, we're in a pattern here where the town of Summerfield appoints the representative for Northwest Guilford County, including Stokesdale and Oak Ridge. And we we don't have a whole lot of communication with that individual, uh, basically none. And, um, is is that normal? Is there, should that rotate?
I. That would be something that as a town, you need to address with them. And honestly, I think it should be a rotating thing. You know, poor town of Gibsonville, it co- it, um, half of it's in Guilford County, half of it's in Alamance County. It's actually in two RPOs. So they get thrown out on everything, same, same situation what you're talking about. Not having any kinda representation.
Yeah, well, it it certainly seems like, I don't think it's intentional at all. It just seems like we kinda get nuzzled out of the way by the, by the big cities and the bigger towns and, and, uh, you know, we don't have the resources, uh, to to do some of the things we would like to do. And, uh, you know, case in point, being hiring Davenport tonight, you know, we're, we're looking at a three thousand dollar investment, which is, it, that's money to us in this little town hall. And so, uh, that's why I ask. Thank you.
From my perspective, I've, I've, for the most part, I've liked what I've heard tonight. I would really appreciate the opportunity, and this is the next agenda item, for this governing board to sit down e- e- with, uh, the NC DOT team to talk more specifically of this. Uh, I do think a more, uh, high-level view of the town, uh, uh, from a traffic flow standpoint, uh, could be beneficial to us and that may be what Davenport can help us do, help us translate our thoughts, uh, into, uh, into DO, or into engineering, uh, to speak, to work with the DOT better. So I do see value in that. Uh, I I just separate, in my mind, as as one council member, mind you, I separate Davenport Engineering and these specific projects here. Uh, uh, you know, that's more of a DOT thing in my mind with Davenport Engineer, Engineering being more of a strategic, high-level, long-term, big-picture need, short-term and long-term need. So I I will be voting for the motion tonight. I did have a lot of questions about this going in. Uh, I appreciate Tim, uh, facilitating this, getting, not only getting the DOT here, but a representative from Davenport Engineering, uh, because without you guys being able to answer the questions, I'm not sure if I could have, uh, really understood where we were going at this point. Uh, so thank you to, thank you to Tim for that and, uh, and thank you for for being here as well. Are there any other? I'm sorry.
If I may, um, uh, I agree, um, the bottom line to tonight's meeting is we, we need to have another meeting and a, another. We need to have some further discussion and really dive down in these maps. And, um, I agree with Derek. I'm not, I'm not sure personally that I'm ready to to spend money on an engineer yet until we talk to DOT. That's my only, my only position, but I do appreciate DOT coming to and and, um, just being here so we can set up a, a, maybe a series of meetings going forward, um, in a, in obviously a short fashion. And it sounded like we need to go ahead and get some sort of resolution together tonight to, to make a request to extend that, um, public, um, hearing time as well, so.
Further discussion?
Yeah, well, I'm probably, I'm gonna vote for it too, but I want us to, uh, be real careful and and utilize what we're already paying for and, uh, and use that as our backup. And, uh, you know, if we do that, I mean, we're, we're putting three thousand dollars out there, that's, that's fine. Uh, we'd have to come back for another vote if we did more, so we, you know, um, I just, well, that's the, that's the only thing that that, uh, that I can, you know, say on it. I think it can be useful, cause we do have other projects we might need them to look at and we'll have my, you know, on call. If we need more money, then we'll come vote for more money, if it's, you know, if it's a use for it, and there may be, so, um.
We're not gonna incur any expense with Davenport until we need them. This is not a, this is not a, uh, what would you call it? Um, this is not like a retainer. This is not what we're doing.
Understood.
Okay. Aline, you had a question?
Yes, I wanted to know if you share. Is there any roundabouts that are in the area that I could go take a look at myself?
Roundabouts, um, yeah, there's a couple in Greensboro, but Greensboro's roundabouts, those, those are actually on city streets. Um, those roundabouts are actually smaller than what we typically like to do. Um, I know that there is a roundabout that NC DOT built in Eden.
Now, but I was wondering how many small towns might have that.
There's two getting ready to be built in Oak Ridge.
Okay.
On a project that's actually on the books now to be left.
Because I did have this theory with my husband down in Pennsylvania, and they put about two or three. And it, it didn't work out too well because, as he said, people sometimes are not really.
Aline, would you mind stepping up to the microphone?
Robbie. You take, take it to the microphone?
I don't wanna take the stand.
There, there's one.
We just, we want it, we want it recorded.
Yeah, there's a bunch in Carnegill also.
Yeah, how about Carfax, the?
King, King right there on fifty-two has two.
Yeah, I mean.
And do you have any kind of statistics of whether it has cut down on accidents?
Yes, it, it definitely does cut down on accidents. I mean, Royal, he's, he's, he's a, he's a traffic engineer. Um, that was his specialty and, you know, based upon accident history, when they go in, the accidents drop dramatically, especially with the severity of the accidents. Instead of it being a major physical injury accident, it's just bump ups, bumpers, you know.
I can specifically remember seeing a study of roundabouts in North Carolina. And I would say, looking at the five-year period before and after they converted an, an intersection to a roundabout, it could have been previously, uh, most of it had previously been, uh, a stop control, but some of it had been a signal. And I, I think out of the two hundred or two, where the, where the, uh, accidents rates had not gone bad. One of them was almost statistically insignificant. And the other one turned out to be a problem for ours, they learned something about.
Okay.
It was projects that Bell Tower and NC State, they learned something about multi-lane roundabouts.
Okay, but I was just wondering on a, a major highway like sixty-eight, have you put s- put them on those kinda roads? Cause I'm just looking at the eighteen-wheelers. Because sometimes when they're making turns, I don't pull up to that line, because I know sometimes when they're making that turn, they need more room.
Right, and if you'll look at those tri- those, those traffic circles or roundabouts that are on those plans, you'll see there's an outside circle and then there's a little inside donut. That is called a truck wheel path. It's to allow for that trend of tractor trailer to actually ride up on.
Okay, so you educated me, thank you.
I do have one, um, further, um.
Go ahead, please, sir.
Do we have an idea where the budget is or the funding is going to come, be appropriated from, what line item? Has anyone looked at that? Just from a, just for the records and for, uh, accounting purposes?
It's a good question, but I have not. Mr. Riggsby and Ms. Thacker's not here tonight, obviously.
We're not writing a check yet, so we're not act, we're required tonight to do that. I mean, cause we won't be writing a check tonight. So, how would?
It it is a good question.
Well, in order to accept a proposal, I think it would be, uh, a good idea to know where the funds are coming from, almost like a, normally what I would consider pre-audit certification, that's something that Ms. Thacker would normally do. Um, you wanna make sure that you've got the money before you accept a proposal. You've got the money, you just have to appropriate it.
Do we not have money in undesignated funds?
Well, I've got the budget pulled up here. Um, I don't see anything under, uh, the six thousand category, which is legal and professional services. We've currently got two line items for audit and attorney. And, um, audit is is pretty much spent up. I think we put just enough in there to pay for the audit. The attorney is flexible. As far as undesignated funds, I think we did fairly well. Um, I don't think there was any contingency left. I mean, we, we're balanced, we're good. All the categories got filled. Keep scrolling here. Yes, that's, that's correct, yeah, under contingency, um, is, is zero. So we, we, anything that we had over, we've, we've delegated to specific line items.
Are we, um, can I just make a suggestion? Um, and like I said, I'm not sure I'll vote or not, but just as a, a suggestion, um, i- if we have money available in the, the professional services, such as the attorney, and we're, we're still, you know, just three or four months into the budget year, could we go ahead and just allocate it to come out of there? And then if we end up having to spend it and end up having to make a line item toward Ma- March or April, you know, we'll have a better picture on how much we need to spend and how much we need to move over from undesignated funds at that point. Instead of just hastily making a move tonight and not knowing what we need to pull from.
When, when are we gonna start utilizing the, uh, engineers?
When?
We need to have a meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
We need to have a meeting and I think we're gonna set up, so, I mean, I'm gonna vote for it, uh, but we do need to know where the money's gonna come from. I mean, I know, I know we got places we can pull it from.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we, it sounded like we can pull it out of professional services in the short term, but we will have to, we will have to reevaluate that fund as we, as before we get to the end of the budget cycle.
What, we had it there?
Uh, yes, yeah, I would say so. Um, the audit contract, I think, comes out to around eleven thousand. We've got twelve thousand in there, so I wouldn't wanna mess with that. Now, the attorney fund, we've got forty-five thousand dollars in the line item. Now, that, that's not a current balance, I'm sure, you know, funds have been taken out of that, uh, since, since July. Um, I'm not sure, that'd be a good question for Mrs. Thacker, whether or not, uh, she's comfortable taking funds out of the attorney line item for that. It all falls under the, the primary category of, of professional services.
That, that's where it needs to be.
That's no issue.
That, that's where it needs to be.
Yeah.
Also.
Yes, sir.
In the future, whenever there's an agenda item where we're gonna spend money, my request would be that staff have a suggestion on when, when that's gonna come out.
Understood.
What, what line item that'll come out? I think that reiterates my question that I had earlier.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Riggsby?
No.
Mr. Foy?
I'm yes.
Mr. Landrith?
I'm yes.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. Consideration to request from North Carolina DOT, a joint workshop meeting between the Stokesdale Town Council and NC DOT District Engineer and NC DOT Project Engineers for projects within the town of Stokesdale.
Well, this item certainly addresses that, that which we just discussed in terms of trying to have some type of workshop meeting where we can exchange our concerns and get answers with NC DOT. Our citizens can attend such a meeting and, uh, hopefully, we will gain a better understanding about what NC DOT is doing and how. And hopefully, they will gain from us, uh, any local concerns and, and perhaps, uh, we can spotlight a problem that they might otherwise not be aware of.
Bobby, would you work with us to, to make that happen?
Yeah, I have no problems. I mean, I, I, I'm here to help you guys out too.
Okay, all right. And and Mr. Henshaw, if we need to call on you to join us? Okay.
I, I would like for us to have a meeting with the fire po- uh, Fire Department Emergency Service people that it, it would be appropriate and us and, uh.
Let's see if we can't coordinate at all, don't you think?
Well, you know, there we go. We're gonna be, we're gonna be paying somebody to come in where we may not need them.
Well, Mr. Henshaw doesn't need necessarily to be here, but.
But that's, I know he'll be here, you know, if we, we do this, if we need him.
Right.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's what I'm talking about. We, we haven't even approached DOT about any of this. I mean, who knows? We, 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 we may, uh, may be able to sit down and show some things, draw some lines, give some ideas and, and, you know, we may be fine and not have to spend the money.
All right.
Um, and, uh, I mean, that's what I said, that's what I said the last meeting, that we're putting the horse before the car. And, um.
Can we do this during a regular council meeting or do we need to call a special meeting for this?
I don't see why we couldn't do it in a regular council meet. It's gonna be, well, next month's November or something. If you wanna do it earlier, I don't, I don't care. I'll, I'll come at three o'clock in the morning, just like I always say, stay four or five hours, it don't matter.
Our next date is.
You don't want to.
November twelfth, am I correct?
Uh, let's see, uh, the next town council meeting is November the ninth.
Ninth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
November the ninth. Mr. Norris, do you think you have time for that?
I have no problem.
Can you, can you bring your project managers, uh?
I will see if I can get, uh, you talking about for this particular project?
Yes, sir.
Specifically?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't see any reason.
Am I correct, Mr. Landrith?
Yeah, but some of those ideas that Tim was talking about too, you know, the, uh, one fifty-eight, we could throw at them while they're here. You know, I mean, they hadn't, they hadn't heard about any of them, so there's nothing they can do. And, uh, and you'd be, you'd be willing to open the listen.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I.
And point us in the right direction, and then if we need to.
I, I, I may not be able to make the decisions, but I can also, um, you know, be the translator from what you guys are wanting to who the ones that make those decisions.
Yeah, you can point us in the right direction.
We will not need you at that meeting, at the ninth, November the ninth.
Well, let's discuss it and, I mean, I'm, I should, I was one opinion, your opinion, we'll see other guys think.
Well, I do have one question while y'all thinking on that. Is, is that date gonna be sufficient enough for us to put some sort of, um, request, a formal request from the council? We need to, to vote on it, put it on the agenda. Is that too late or do we need to do something prior to that?
I, I would think you need to do something now.
Let's do it tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Norris, i- is right away acquisition scheduled for May twenty-four on the current project R fifty-eight twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Based upon the a- approved schedule right now, but, you know, things can happen and, you know, if we feel like things, issues, problems come up, you know.
Well, I, I.
To address the concerns, you know, we have to ta- it may take a little bit longer. Yes, we, we can possibly delay it. We don't like to, but again, it's one of those things, if we are given the money, we like to spend it. If not, we lose it.
The, the s- the stated reason for these traffic circles is to slow and calm traffic and eliminate fatalities and collisions. If that be the case, do you have any idea why one fifty-eight and sixty-five were not chosen for the concept of a traffic circle?
Um, no, I, I, I cannot, um, but, um, if I had to think about it, I mean, it.
There are those that believe that if these three traffic circles are built, that a lot of that traffic is going to turn right on one fifty-eight and head east and turn, then turn north on two twenty.
Yeah.
I'm one of those people that believes that, and so then that moves the problem. Uh, but again, that intersection, uh, seems like the place to calm the traffic versus the other intersection because once the traffic moves to there, it'll already be slowed down.
Again, that could be one of your recommendations.
And, and, and so, there, there are just things like that, that, that I've discussed with local citizens, with local business owners, uh, the, the people that are traveling up beneath these intersections that, that see the traffic. Uh, and there are a lot of questions out there. Uh, you know, a lot of times folks are, are hesitant to speak at these public meetings and it's something a little bit more informal was what I was trying to generate and, and hope council would, would be interested in instead of a, a formal town council meeting. We're, we're in, you know, the attorney's here, the press is here and those types of things.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I was, I was hoping that we could, you know, spend some time and dive into this council with an appropriate number of NCDOT personnel, who, you know, whoever y'all wanna bring, whoever you think's appropriate. That, that's on your end, I, I don't know who that might be. Of course, there's only two of us, if three of us assemble in a room anywhere, that's a quorum and we have to provide public notice, we just basically can't do it. So only, I can only meet with one other council member to discuss this kind of thing. Otherwise, it's a public meeting and we have to go through the, the proper notice requirements. And so, uh, a workshop meeting generally, uh, w- w- we, we don't vote, uh, we, we don't have the town attorney present to save, save that cost and we can spend more time and, you know, citizens are, are welcome to. It's a little easier for a citizen to participate in, in those type of, uh, type of meetings, you know, certainly we encourage that. And, uh, so that, that is more along the lines of what I was thinking versus a formal town council meeting. I don't know what we would have on the November agenda, but, you know, when we have things like public hearings and rezonings and so forth, we're legally obligated to hear those and, and we gotta get to them. And sometimes we have people that have traveled long distances to come to those meetings and we can't keep them waiting for hours on end. So, so that is why I was more inclined towards a, a workshop type environment. Don't, you know, generally I, I like these meetings to be in the evening, so our citizens can readily get here and participate. If that's a problem for NCDOT, maybe we could do them a little earlier, but I would hate for them to be in the middle of the day, like two o'clock in the afternoon because our citizens have trouble getting to those because of their employment and other commitments.
That's a, that's a good point. I, I wasn't thinking about that, we do have an attorney sitting there paying him. Um, so I'm, I'm open for the workshop date myself. Um, that, that is a good point.
How about Thursday, November second?
Does that give you enough time to do what you need to do to put the proposal together or?
What are you, what proposal?
I'm not proposing anything.
Okay.
I want to talk with this council with the DOT.
All right.
Thursday, November second.
Is that okay?
No, no planning board meeting that day, is there, Mr. Wagner?
Yes, sir.
No, no, you're good. Um, the planning board meeting is the week before that on the twenty-sixth of October.
And council has already voted to keep Thursday evenings free for this meeting room, so it should be available, right?
Correct, yes. I, I feel, uh, very, very certain that the, the meeting room's available for the second.
We just recently went through that one.
Yes, sir.
Special meeting for November the second?
Yep.
To meet with NCDOT?
I'll second the motion.
The motion, gotcha.
And, and, and that to be a workshop type meeting?
Hold on, guys, we got an, we, we, oh, yeah, okay, we're good.
That to be a workshop meeting to address NCDOT issues only?
Is there, is there a second to that motion, please?
I, I seconded the motion, I'm just making sure we're communicating about what the motion is.
Did I make the motion?
You did.
Is, just for clarification.
Stay awake.
Is that at seven o'clock, is that right?
Yes.
Seven.
At least seven.
November the second.
I have a motion and I have a second, is there discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye.
And just as a housekeeping measure, if, if, I'd like to make a motion, uh, the town clerk, Robbie Wagner, draft, uh, an email, uh, stating that it's the governing body's request to the NCDOT to extend the deadline of the feedback period, uh, from the September twenty-fifth workshop at Town Hall with the North Carolina DOT until November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is that reasonable, Mr. Norris?
I, I.
November what?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
I'll, I'll second.
I, I, I guess, I mean, it's.
Okay, we, we, we just.
Bring your ass.
Yeah, I mean, I don't make that decision, so, I mean, it's, it's definitely.
Well, I guess we're just making the.
It's no, if, unless you ask.
Yeah, well, i- i- it's a, it's a request from the governing body, so.
Yes.
May- maybe that'll mean something.
Who?
Especially if it's as a whole, I think it would carry more weight.
Mr. Norris, who does make that decision?
It will be the, the division engineer and the project manager, um.
Mr. Archer?
Yeah, Mr. Archer's the division engineer, um, he ultimately has the final say-so.
Okay.
I think this is gonna pass, tell them please, we, we really need this because this is a, it's a big change for the town and, and we've got some things we've got to address.
We, we don't have, you know, we're, we're growing and we, we don't do this every day, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You're okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great, thank you. We, we should vote on that motion, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
You have a second?
All right.
And, and, and Mr. Foy, I might add, so we're specific, that is for project R dash fifty-eight twenty-three? That, can, can we include that in the motion so that we're communicating clearly?
Right.
Well, certainly we, we would talk about that, I mean, uh, I, I would like to leave it open. There's another project that's one fifty-eight, I'd like to leave, if we want to ask any questions on that. I don't want to limit it ourselves.
That's the only one that they're talking about too, as far as, uh, property acquisitions.
The, the, the clock is ticking on fifty-eight twenty-three, so that's, that's.
There's no clock on the others.
That, make sure there won't be any confusion when they receive this request at NCDOT.
Cause it, it makes a difference of who I bring.
Understood.
Because I, I know who to bring for this one, but if you're talking about other things, that could be a total separate group of people.
All right, we're talking about right now the, um, stopping the clock for a little bit.
That's right, the special call meeting.
Yeah, that'll be for fifty-eight twenty-three, yeah, yeah.
All right, so Robbie, just if you could include Tim's amendment to the motion.
Mm-hmm, and that's for the, I'm gonna include the project number in the letter that I'll send to Mr. Archer, is that?
Uh, yeah.
The NCDOT.
Copy, mister.
Yeah, that's just a letter, bring everybody you can about all the projects.
That's fine.
You know.
Well, pretty much if, if it's anything else that you want, I would be the one to address it with.
Your guy.
And then, you know, um, I feel like something else needs to be going, you know, to look forward on. I could bring our traffic engineering group in on it also. But ultimately, that's what I, I'm here for as the district engineer.
All right.
Great, thank you, Bobby.
Who made the motion, might I ask?
Mr. Foy.
Mr. Foy, I seconded it.
Okay, and Tim seconded it.
I, i- i- and amended it and I accept the amendment.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones? And I am also aye. Citizens' comments, I have, this must be Dr. Priscilla Abelidub.
Olnick.
Olnick?
Yep.
Olnick, okay. I didn't know if she was, is she Polish? I don't know.
She's, she's, she's Summerfieldese. How you doing, Priscilla?
Welcome.
Dr. Priscilla Olnick here. I am, I am not a doctor. Uh, thirty-one hundred Pleasanton Trade, uh, good evening. I just want to say Summerfield, uh, Stokesdale's looking better and better. You might get a mass exodus of, uh, Summerfieldians to Stokesdale.
Just don't bring a car.
Uh, I'll bring my horse, um.
Great.
So, while you all have the opportunity still to control your little local government, uh, I would encourage you to do so. Um, Mr. Bobby here, I know he's a local guy and he'll be helpful to you, but he is a, a part of a much larger machine. And then as Mr. Jones said, it's you all's responsibility to see about your community. And I was on social media and I noticed that a New Dawn Realty had posted the three pictures of the roundabouts. And Stokesdale doesn't usually get too much action on social media. And it had a hundred and three shares. And, and I don't remember seeing very many comments of people who were fond of roundabouts. I mean, we're country folks, we go straight, back, left and right. We don't go roundy-round. This is not European, you know, Europe, this is Stokesdale. People do not love roundabouts. I mean, it's just, mm, we, it, it's, we don't go round and round and round and round. We go straight to the by right, we turn left at the stoplight. Uh, it, it's, they're very confusing and I know these engineers love them. They love roundabouts, they wanted to put one in Summerfield in the center of Town Hall, it's just the most ridiculous thing. And if you're trying to discourage eighteen-wheelers from going to the by right and going to all these little, uh, local businesses that you're gonna be impacting, I mean, kind of defeats the purpose a little bit. Um, I mean, I can see all these tractor trailers bumping over these things, I mean, it's just kind of silly in Little Stokesdale. Um, we've had our, uh, power, our government power, kind of taken from us. So while you can, support your citizens, do what they want to do, uh, do what's best for your town, not necessarily, and I don't mean this to be offensive, but, you know, Big Brother. You do what you want, not what Big Brother wants you to do. Um, and might I suggest that one going into Rockingham County, uh, that we, uh, put a Phil Berger statue in the middle of that roundabout headed towards his casino, cause I can guarantee you this is all tied together. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Always good to see you, Priscilla.
Very well said. This is a, a major concern. We, we don't know what the connection is with the, uh, casino, but it all makes sense. We've had some individual conversations among ourselves and, um, it's, who knows? But, uh, anyway, Mr. Nadell?
Thank you, Mark Nadell, eighty-two eleven Wendy Gale Drive. Uh, one, I wasn't gonna make a comment, but you had mentioned the roundabouts, uh, a good friend of mine just retired from UPS. He was a over-the-road driver from, uh, New York to, um, Indiana. That was his route. An interesting comment I had with him, we were talking about roundabouts, and he said to me, you won't see truck traffic going through, through traffic because most truck drivers that are going through a community will go miles and miles out of the way to bypass it because for them it's a pain. The local guys are not the tandems, so they're gonna probably still, they're still gonna make deliveries. So I'm, I'm kind of on the fence one way or the other about it, but I think as, as they, they talk about safety, I think the, um, it's gonna eliminate, I live right off sixty-eight, and I can tell you, they come screaming down sixty-eight, the tandems, and I'm not even sure if they're allowed or not, and you hear them using their engine brakes. That, in my estimation, when those roundabouts go in, you're not gonna see those tandems coming down that road because they're going to Winston, they're gonna go down, they're gonna roll through seventy-three because they're not gonna want to take those things. And I believe the roundabout you were talking about, um, I work over at the zoo, there's a roundabout in Ashboro.
Yes.
That's the round I could be talking about with that extra lane, I don't know if anyone's ever seen it. It's a great roundabout, keeps the traffic slow and there's no way you can run off the road. I mean, it's, if anyone has ever headed out to Ashboro and they go to, uh, near Zoo Parkway, take a look at that roundabout, that's a great example, I think, of it. So, I'm, again, I'm not pro, for, against it. My, my main comment that I wanted to come up with, one, I wanted to thank Councilman Jones for bringing this forward because I think the motion he made regarding having a professional engineer working alongside of us is kind of like going into a lawsuit and not having an attorney. I realize that there's no legal, um, benefit to it maybe, but there might be because as an interpreter, we'll use that term, I think what's gonna happen is it'll educate us as a town. I have to believe it'll have more input on those that make a decision because now they're hearing it from a professional. And I think Councilman Jones' motion was the right thing to do. Uh, I appreciate the fact that you passed it. I'm a little disappointed in Councilman Rigsby for not voting for it. Uh, I think that's something that will have a benefit as we grow. And again, thank you for, um, taking that step because I think that's, that's a positive step.
Thank you, Mark. Council comments, Mr. Rigsby?
Uh, just want to re- reiterate, I'm not against, um, using an engineering firm. I, I just believe that we should meet with DOT first before we start spending money. Um, we, we already spend money on taxes and, uh, we have an open dialogue with DOT. I think we should take advantage of that before we, we go out and invest three thousand dollars in something that we don't exactly know what we want yet. Um, that's, that's my point, so my no vote was not against the process. It was, it was, it was more of the process versus the overall idea of improving the safety and, and taking a deeper dive into this. It was just a, um, like you said earlier, putting the cart before the horse. And, um, I stand on my principles and, um, um, I, I do think we have a lot of traffic concerns we need to look at and we'll, we'll look at those with the appropriate people and, and get it done, but, um, sorry, you're disappointed.
Mr. Foy?
I'd like to thank everybody in attendance and especially recognize, uh, Mr. Henshaw and Mr. Norris, uh, for coming. I know you, you worked a long day all week and you came here on a Friday night and that, and that really does mean a lot. Uh, so, uh, everybody have a good weekend, thank y'all.
Mr. Landrith?
I'd like to thank everybody for being here, I could have just as easily voted no on that for the, for the moment, but we, we're not, I don't think we're gonna spend any money till we see, we gotta spend some money. So, you know, we're gonna have a meeting, you know, without them and, and I hope that's the way it's gonna work and, uh, and it, and if we do, if we do it, we'll, we'll spend it wisely like we try to do on everything else. This is a very important issue to people, it affects a lot of people. Um, and if, of course, it, you know, affects safety, so we're gonna take it serious and, and do the best we can and we, you know, I always appreciate everybody's input. Uh, you know, everybody's not gonna agree and, uh, we just have to sort it out. And I don't know how much influence we can have as a council, but we'll try to have as much influence as we possibly can. So if anybody's got any concerns or anything, you know, we make sure and get ahold of one of us or, uh, clerk's office or whatever and they'll relay it to us. But thanks, uh, everybody for coming.
Mr. Jones?
I too would like to thank Mr. Henshaw and Mr. Norris, in, in particular, a professional coming out on a Friday night our meeting, that's dedication right there. And I'd like to thank all our citizens in attendance and I hope you'll come back for our workshop meeting. And, and do remember that all five of us are accessible by, by email, by phone. If you got a question, don't hesitate to bring it to one of us or all of us. Now, that's one of the reasons we're here, just, we're here to serve you. Uh, this is a foot washing job, there's not a lot of glory in it. But, uh, I, I do think that with the traffic passing through Stokesdale every day, the, the amount of people that are in jeopardy, that we need to do everything we can reasonably do to make it as good as it can be. And thus, that's why we're on this track. Thank you all. I too would like to thank Mr. Henshaw and Mr. Norris for both being here, uh, realizing, of course, it is a Friday night and there are probably many other things you could do. But we've had a very, very good turnout tonight. This is a special call meeting and as your mayor, I'm very, very pleased. I, I, I greatly appreciate the fact that you're here. Uh, as to Mr. Jones's comment, please, uh, take in consideration the workshop.